...need training on basic skills of interviewing and investigation, lifting finger prints, patrol tactics, tactics and techniques. In other words, give those people what they need on their street, on the street here in Forestville to be better police officers. That's what those young officers want. They want training. So give those kinds of things to those young officers. And speaking to those young officers, you have an outstanding core of young officers. You have some really good sergeants, I might add. Okay? The problem is half of them want to leave. One guy asked me for a recommendation. I would write him a recommendation for a police department. So half of your department wants to leave. That's sad. That breaks my heart. Okay? And I want to say something to those officers over there. I asked, I told each officer that there would be no way I would tell their name. I talked to members of the government and the community. I said, "There's no way I'm going to say who said what, when and where about whatever." Because it's not fair to those officers. This is truly anonymous and confidential information. Okay? So you've got some officers and they want to leave. I want them to stay and better serve your community. Okay? And quite frankly, one of them told me, "It's all dependent on what kind of happens," you know, with your report, you know? Be real frank. So you've also got issues relating to kind of this ad hoc business about training. Who goes and who doesn't? Right now, there was a sign up sheet on a bulletin board. You had to sign up. It was kind of fuzzy on what, how that gets determined. It was kind of fuzzy on who got money to go on training and the like. Now, let me explain, well, I'll get to that later. It doesn't, you've got to get DCO in there, which is Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. They'll, they'll through your records and I'll give you a copy. Assign a sergeant to coordinate all your training and make sure that the training, you know, complesed to DCO requirements. Focus on those four skills like I talked about. Uh, you know, patrol tactics would be really neat, you know? I think you guys would really like that. I think the other thing that would be nice, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, is crime analysis so that you can divide your city into some beats. You can find out where your burglaries are occurring, where your robberies are occurring, where your petty thefts are, your drug cases, whatever else. You can concentrate on those things. Let me tell you what, you've got the sergeants to do it. You've got good sergeants. You've got good lieutenant, or you've got a lieutenant that potentially helped as well. We'll talk about him in a minute. Supervisory and command schools should be mandatory. There are a number of them around the state. They're cheap. You can get help financially to go to them. There are like three week schools, four week schools. Lehman has one, Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas. There's command schools for lieutenants, sergeants for deputy chiefs and above. So let's talk about line officers. Highly engaged, energized, as I talked about. Fairly solid sergeants. Forty plus percent of you are above want to leave the Forestville Police Department. So how do you, how do you make it better, guys? I think training is a good way to do it. Improve morale. You can, you can add some organizational change as well to improve morale. Train those sergeants a little better so that they understand about how to counsel officers, how to do better. Conduct annual performance evaluations. All you guys out there in this audience that have people that you are supervising, you ask yourself, "Do you do performance evaluations of them?" It should be mandatory. Every single employee should get performance evaluations, whether they are individuals that work for the Dallas Police Department or the Forestville Police Department. Guess what? Those personnel files, I, I, I saw department folders that had none of them in there. I had a guy that was like 20 years veteran I was looking at and he had like four of them in there. What's going on? Develop a policy manual. Now let me explain to you, my hat's off. We're talking about a gentleman here in a minute who was promoted relatively sudden, but he's trying. He did indeed try to develop a good policy manual based on what's called KLEA, which is Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation, based on those standards. And he's, he got things to me in a timely fashion. I really appreciate it. But unfortunately, he had heart problems and had to have an operation. He left and I didn't get anything. I didn't get one report after Assistant Chief Hayden left the department, even though I requested them over and over again. Not one report. Require professional conduct. Okay, so there are some comments about your lieutenant, right? And he cusses and then he swears that he was in a meeting and that he slammed his fist down on the, on the table and he's cussing and swearing. You can't do that anymore. It's not, it's not forward police thinking, okay? You can't, you can't get out there and cuss and swear and threaten people. And if I hear you say anything like that, if there's any more rumors, I'm going to fire you. That's not the way you run a police department in 2017. It's just real simple. So you've got to require professional conduct in these meetings and, and that's pretty important. Corporals and field training officers. Let me applaud the Forestville Police Department for trying to do something. They almost got this right, but I was a little concerned about it. You know, the chief wanted to recognize officers that were field training officers that were doing a good job. He wanted to do something, someone wanted to, to recognize them. So they developed this rank of corporal. But the problem is the corporal rank is not within the bounds of the collective bargaining agreement. So people got stripes and they got supervisory duty. They could claim they were supervisors because they were called, if there wasn't a sergeant out, to be kind of a senior officer. And they, they wanted to, you know, I guess make aware and make them role models. These are good officers. And that's a good, the problem is they didn't pay them anything. And you've got to pay me. When you put those stripes on someone, they're taking extra liability where they go to the scene, they call the shots, they're the ones that get sued, you know, they're the ones that are acting in this, you know, supervisory capacity. You've got to give them a little extra money. I don't care if it's a one time thing. You've got to do it. So I'm telling you, eliminate the rank of corporal and recognize the rank of senior officer. Okay? And then pay those senior officers. I don't care whether it's $200, you know, twice a year, you know? Do something for them because I think they are, they are really solid officers for the most part. They've done a good job in trying to keep your department together. And I'm telling you, try and keep your department together because these two factions, they're at war. They're at war inside your department. Okay? So reward those field trained officers and those senior officers. Investigative services, maybe one of the most distressing conversations that I've had a long time were with your detectives. And then I kind of followed up with your criminal district attorney who said, "Okay, now you live in a city of Forestville, which has about, what, 6,800 people somewhere in there, but you know, well, that's kind of crazy because at any given period of time you cry out over 10,000 and on a weekend you probably have a heck of a lot more than that." Okay? And you have a lot of people here and you have a lot of things going on. And out of her entire five county area, this is the biggest concentration of people. And you would expect then that to be the biggest concentration of cases. She has 10, less than 10% of her cases come from Forestville. Now what does that tell you? Something ain't happening at the investigative end. That's what that tells you. Okay? In fact, she told me a story where she actually went to one of her other cities or one of her other counties and was entering a negotiation with a guy who'd been arrested for armed robbery. And the attorney asked that person, asked the attorney, "Does this include the Forestville armed robbery?" And she was unaware of it because there was no investigation of that armed robbery. Okay, that's kind of scary stuff in my opinion. So they don't have good reputations inside the department, which is sad because, you know, being a detective, I, I take that personally. I mean, I think both the detectives try hard, but I think they're limited because they haven't been trained appropriately. They don't understand a lot of basic kinds of things like Brady. Brady is a case called Brady v. Maryland, 1962, and it basically says, "Look, you've got to turn everything over to the defense." Not just the stuff to prosecute, but everything. Okay? So that includes officer notes. That includes sketches and diagrams and that includes statements and evidence that is not supporting the conviction. One detective said to me, "I only give him stuff that's going to be, you know, helpful for conviction." Wow! You can't do that. All right? And it's going to cause problems, wrinkle problems down the road because district attorney or your criminal district attorney is going, "I don't know whether I want to take any more cases from Forestville and prosecute them. I don't think I can do it because if I put those officers on the stand, things are going to come about their personal background, which is going to negate their testimony. Will impinge upon their truthfulness." Okay? Under this case of Brady. Right? So unfortunately, neither the detectives really has a good understanding of that nor the skills to be detectives. I talked to them about that. I said, "I've been a detective, I pride myself, I've got leading book in criminal investigations. I love detectives." And I was underwhelmed with some, with some. And it's not because they're bad people. These are good people, but they don't have the training. They may have gotten a little lackadaisical, you know? They made, made some mistakes along the way. I don't know, but we've got to improve that. So we reassign both those detectives back to patrol or get them some training. I would prefer getting back on the street and then, you know, get some people that want to be detectives, train them up the right way and, and serve you as a community a lot better. Develop a policy manual specific to your investigating, investigations. How do you do a homicide investigation? How do you do a sex crime investigation, burglary investigation, whatever else? That should be articulated and trained upon and the like. And then, you know, select and train future detectives. I will tell you the saddest thing I heard from one of your police officers. He said, "Thank God." Well, by the time they come out of the scene, Texas Rangers are there on any major crime. Communications and automated systems. Everybody talked about dispatch and I, so I went for the dispatch system. First of all, you guys got to understand you're only paid $600 a month for that. Okay? That is phenomenally low amount. And I was, I was kind of surprised how they do this. There's two desks, one which is digital, the other one which is analog. And those two dispatches in there, when I watched them, they worked simultaneously across. So not all the time are you guys on analog. Sometimes you're on digital, you just don't know. Okay? That's what they're telling you. Number two, you know, we, we should be able to improve that. I mean, let's go get a study done on the technicalities of how do we push up the analog system or how do we get our own system? I wouldn't say go get your own system because you've got personnel expenses you like. Let's just see how we can get that other one up to a lot better capacity. People talk to me about Devzons. There's a whole, whole technical, kind of reason to eliminate those, where you put up repeaters, whatever. But that's a relatively easy kind of fix and we should do it. And that, I agree with your chief. I agree with everybody else and that should be priority number one. You're currently using Badge, which is an antiquated system like Cardinal Systems and CopSync, which is a really good system. And you're both, you're using both of them? I don't understand why. I asked people why, they couldn't tell me why. I asked the chief why, he couldn't tell me why. I don't understand why you're using Badge. Throw it away and focus only on CopSync. You know, you can do everything you want. There's no crime analysis at all. There's no coordination of anything in terms of patrol. You guys had to go out, you had to try to get some kind of city, different parts of the city and the like. But you should really think about this. So if two of you, try to figure out a way to divide the city up, try to say in those districts. But more importantly, divide the city into little quadrant areas, maybe three or four blocks wide and make reporting areas so that you can have crime analysis. So that you can determine where there's burglaries, where there's robberies, where there's suspected drugs. Inside the department, there's very little communication between each other. In the shift, there's good communication. I mean, I have to tell you what, your sergeants have worked pretty well with your officers. The guys on the street, they do a good job. They do a really good job and they're trying hard. Okay? And there's some communication going on there, but I would like to see you have roll call a lot more often. Maybe like make it formalized. Have a group roll call for five minutes every time you can do it, even if you can just do a little bit of training there or just go over something. Hey, San Antonio had officer shot and here's what happened. You know, something that brings you out of Forestville to realize, "This is a big area. You know, be a little more careful. You've got, you know, San Antonio sneezes and the bad guys come down here. We want to be ready for it." Okay? So, you know, use that. Add a computer and crime analysis function. We're talking pennies here. We're not talking a lot of money. Train a couple of civilians. We've got two really, I think, pretty good working ladies in there that are trying hard to cope with a lot of different functionalities there. Train them on crime analysis. Get them excited about what's going on in your city. I think that maybe helped the morale issue as well. It has in passing a lot of other departments. Facilities, I mentioned this. Wow! You're, you're totally in tuckling, you know? I mean, you need to put some paint on it and clean it up. You know, the back door needs to be secured a little better. There's a log there, but gosh, you know, for a few hundred dollars, you can put up camera systems, you can get electronic pass keys. I meant the dog, the pet cat who lives out in the back alley from the department. Good, good looking cat, I might add, you know? But, you know, we've got to do something to make that, that area secure. Maybe put some fencing around for the parking area, putting some cameras up. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of expenses. You're closed during lunch hour. I mean, come on, you put a sign up that says, "Closed between 12 and 1:00." And there's even a crack on the window that goes to the, you can't do that. Why? Because in modern practices of policing today, we are here to serve you, the community. And if you've got to do something and make a complaint about the police or you want to come in and report something to the police, many of you, your lunch hour may be the only time you can do it. So those police departments need to be open. Our department needs to be open, I think, during the lunch hour. And let me talk about another thing, your broken windows theory. A few years ago, a couple of guys in Harvard came up with a theory called Broken Windows. James F. Wilson and Calvin. They basically said, "Look, when you're in an area and it's all dirty and it's not professional, what they can, you know, or it's a neighborhood and there's broken windows and shrubs and bad yards and everything, it looks dilapidated, then crime seizes that area. People hang around those areas, make them drug houses and it's bad." Well, the same thing goes here. If your, if your police headquarters doesn't look professional, people don't act professional. You know, I walked in your police department and I got to tell you guys, I might have mentioned it to one or two of you over there on that wall. I walked in the Dallas Police Department and I would expect to see Police Chief magazine, Tactical Edge magazine, you know, some posters on tap teams. I would have expected to see something in there that I've seen in almost every police department I've ever gone to. To be really frank, the smaller departments, they like that stuff even more. Okay? There was none of that. I saw none of it in your waiting room. Okay? I don't understand. Probably because you don't have that communication where you sit down in there, you discuss about some of the common problems because you're not on the cutting edge of best practices in American policing. You're trying at the officer level and at the sergeant level, but you're not there. Okay? And I think the reason you're not there is because of your leadership. And we'll talk about that at Noddy here in a second. Okay? So remodel that HQ, put some paint in there and clean it. Secure the area with some alarms, with cameras. Schedule personnel to be available during the lunch hour. You know, you might even think about hiring a volunteer. You've got some good people here in this audience. Maybe we can get some volunteers to come down and, and last that one hour in the, in the police department while the young ladies take lunch. Okay? You know, use of your reserves, you know? Internal affairs. Wow! That's all I can say. Internal affairs is a process by which we talk about investigating complaints against the police. Okay? There are, this is an area that's hugely administered by protocol and by policy. Everything is just, you know, very, very regimented because there's almost always lawsuits that come out of those things. Okay? So I asked, oh my gosh, please understand, I asked multiple times for investigative reports from the internal affairs process. When I went to the personnel department and I looked over in the personnel records over here, I would see something that says, "Lieutenant Evans did a criminal, or did an internal affairs investigation." And then it would say blah, 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 blah. And then I would say, "Where's the investigation? I'd like to see a copy of the investigation." There wasn't any. No one could give it to me. The people in the personnel department couldn't give it to me. The chief couldn't give it to me. The assistant chief couldn't give it to me. The lieutenant couldn't give it to me. So where the hell is the investigation? I mean, these are things that cause major lawsuits and major fractions inside your department. Okay? Because some of your people inside that department, they know, those investigations should be right there. And then who does the investigation? That was always kind of a wonderful thing. I would ask your officers, "Who does the internal affairs investigation?" "Well, Lieutenant Evans." "Well, Lieutenant Evans hasn't been there because he's on another assignment." "Who does it?" "Well, I think the chief does." "No, no, I think the assistant chief does." "No, I think the sergeant does." The sergeants didn't know if they did it or not in some cases. Specific comments about harassment of community members. I talked to some of you individually and you told me that when you went and made a complaint, that they felt intimidated by the police officer that they made the complaint about, that he, you know, he came and knew that you made a complaint against him. That is absolutely not tolerable. The other thing that's not tolerable is that when you go to the police department and you make a complaint against an officer, they make you sign a report that says if you are lying or if something's wrong or whatever, they make, they say, some of the guys make pride on, "Well, we're going to prosecute you for filing a false police report." This is the only police department that would say that today. Because you don't sign those kinds of things and you don't say those kinds of things to people who are coming into your department to complain about your officers in today's world. Transparent and open. Now, do you have someone that comes in and makes a false criminal complaint against an officer? Yeah, that's different. But someone that comes in and says, "I might like about an officer because of rude conduct," you're going to make that person sign a complaint and tell them that if they're lying or if this doesn't come up, "We're going to prosecute you"? Man, I'm going to tell you what, you wouldn't get out of a city hall meeting in Dallas or San Antonio. Okay? Yeah, well, none of them anymore in Noddy. All right. So develop a policy manual, protocol for directing internal investigations. The process must be completely transparent. Make it open. When people don't know what's going on, rumors start. Okay? When people don't know what's going to happen if someone makes a complaint against them, you know, they feel like they've been slighted. They want to know what's going on. So make it transparent. Stop the practice of requiring citizens to sign complaints. Period. In Dallas, we stopped that a long time ago. Cultivate a different attitude within the Forestville Police Department about complaints. You don't get very many. So if you get them, there might be something to it. Most of the complaints inside the Forestville Police Department, what I can gain is I can get no statistics on any of this, okay, are from supervisors or other people complaining about the, another person in their squad or in another department or another, another squad or the like. I mean, and that's, that's fraction going on, that, the two factors. Let's see here. Develop a policy manual. Stop the practice of requiring, you know, we want the police, we want the public to come into our police departments. We want them to tell us when they had a bad experience. I mean, the whole idea of continuous quality improvement comes from you, the citizens. You're the ones that should direct this police department. You're the ones that should demand the very best on your police department to be on the cutting edge of best practices across this country. Period. Train your I.A. investigators to drive, find one, make a name to the internal affairs investigators, train them. Refere the complaints involving any potential criminal matter outside the DPS. That's not even in policy. Okay? Because you're a small department, you need someone external. Internal communication, external agency. Very little internal communication going on, except for at the officer level and between the sergeants, that's going on pretty good. Going up and down, very little. The police chief simply not known in the wider criminal justice community. I talked to people in the criminal justice community and other agencies. One of those individuals has been here for two years and said, "I have never met the chief of police." And he is the head of one of those criminal justice agencies here in your city. And he said, "I tried. I've tried to make one, I've tried to do this. I have not met him." That is not acceptable. I talked to another person and I said, "How many times have you seen?" So I said, "He wouldn't tell me." "Hold on, you did one, not all." "So I'm asking you." "Why not?" Coordination, cooperation between criminal justice communities is critical. Interesting for you to know as a community, many of the individuals in the external agencies that I talked to said, "The biggest problem with the Forestville Police Department are not the officers. They're good, solid. We work really good with them at the street level." No leadership. Well, unquote, if I heard it once, I heard it 10 times. Good, we're in a working relationship on the street? Not at the top. Implement weekly meetings, roll calls. Emphasize officer training, common issues, crime problems. Formalize quarterly meetings between the chief and the area head if you have to. Somewhere where you can get together. Because let me tell you what, you've got a crime problem here, your county knows about it and the supers are going to know about it from DPS, you know, and your district attorney investigator should know about it. So you've got to be able to coordinate and communicate back and forth. Command promotion. Okay, let's get into it. The promotion of Perry Al Hyatt to Assistant Chief was highly problematic. Let me explain why it was highly problematic. What we did, what they did here was, I've never seen anything like it. And my partner who read this thing was like shaking his head going, "My God, what's going on?" The attorney that read my report was shaking his head going, "Are you kidding me?" Perry Al Hyatt, my understanding, worked for CLEET, which is the Combined Law Enforcement Association of Texas. Right? We have two representatives from CLEET here. And CLEET is a good organization that tries to organize and help and assist officers who are unionized in base. And he applied to be an officer here. Now Perry was an officer several years ago. And so he applied to be an officer, but unfortunately during that period of time that he was an officer back in, I think it was the 80s, he'd fallen a little bit out of, out of physical health. And he couldn't pass a physical test and according to one officer who was hired with him at about the same time, you know, he even admitted, "He couldn't do it." And so he dropped out of the potential qualifications to be a police officer that year. I think it was 2014. Then all of a sudden, the collective bargaining agreement came up. And in 2015, or yeah, I think 2015 or 2016, yeah, 2015, I'm sorry, 2015, 2018 is the current one that we're in, right? Attorneys? 2015, 2018 is the one we're in now?
Yes.
Okay. So in 2015, he helped write it or did, according to your city attorney, Mr. Hogg, he wrote it. Wrote the collective bargaining agreement and, and put in there a whole new section on hiring. And in that new section on hiring, it says that if you've been a former police officer for Forestville, you don't have to take the physical exam. Okay? You don't have to take that BT exam. All right? So then he gets hired and within four months, he's promoted to Assistant Chief of Police. Now you've got to ask yourself, what does that do to an organization? I mean, you can imagine when you say there's two factions inside your police department and one of them is kind of like, "What the hell is going on?" And the other one's saying, "Now we love the chief." Well, some questions get to be rising up in the top, so to speak. And so that's what happened. At the same time, I was talking to the lieutenant and I said, "What happened here, Lieutenant? I mean, he stepped promoted up over you, all of the sergeants to be Assistant Chief. He was also hired at the highest rank of a police officer. Although most of his experience is in the jail." Not only that. Not only that, but when I was looking at his employment file, it said that he had gotten his degree from the University of Charleston. But the diploma said Mountain State University.